I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I still think that an invocation is needed right now.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Yes, Chair, Robert DeWitt.
President.
Yes, here.
Here.
Jay Sandler.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Present.
Alternates, Lord Marshall, and please choose, Oliver, I'm allowed to be.
Here.
Okay, so next item would be approval of our agenda for the night.
I'll make that motion. We approve the agenda as written.
Any discussion? Hearing none. If we have a roll call vote to approve the agenda?
Mark Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair, Robert DeWitt.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the July 10th, 2025 minutes.
The motion we approve the July 25 minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. If we have a roll call vote for approval?
Jay Sandler.
Yes. Mark Smith. Yes.
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 Chair, Robert DeWitt.
Yes. Okay. Before we get to the public hearing, our attorney, Mr. Davis, would like to make a couple comments.
I'll take the podium. It's been a while since we convened a ZBA hearing. Apparently, the public wanted to see a ZBA hearing as well. I want to just give you your bow.
Speak nice and loud, bud. This old gal's got to hear it.
I'm screaming.
Oh, good.
Okay. I wanted to just remind the ZBA board, we have our annual training and we go over some of the legalities of a ZBA and we go over our process. We haven't done that in a while. We haven't had a lot of ZBA variance matters. But I wanted to remind you of a couple of things. Tonight, you're going to be listening to a dimensional variance request, and I think you're all familiar with that. We still maintain a two-meeting process where you're going to get through the public hearing this evening. You're going to hear from the applicant this evening. You'll have a chance to dialogue with the applicant on the applicant's presentation. We'll keep the public from directing comments to the applicant. The public will make all their comments through Mr. DeWitt as the chairperson. We'll maintain that. Public input is, as you know, I'm a huge fan of public input. I think you should listen carefully to all of that. During the public hearing process, when you're hearing from the public, we don't dialogue with the public. It's sort of a one-way conversation, the kind that I have at home. One-way conversation. And you don't respond. You just, you listen to the public comments. You absorb the public comments. Keep notes about the public comments. When the applicant is making its presentation, feel free to remind the applicant of a public comment and say, what did you think about that? Or how do you, you know, how do you respond to that? At the end of the day, the, and I tell you guys when I do your training, you're, you're the last relief valve prior to court. And I tell you that all the time. I think a zoning board is one of the most important boards in all of the communities in Michigan because you serve as the final step, the judicial branch, if you will, on the zoning ordinance. So variance is a request to deviate from an ordinance, and you're the hearers and the deciders of that issue. And I want to remind you that whether you grant a variance or deny a variance, any agreed party can challenge your decision to the circuit court. And I want to remind you that it, and you know this, when it goes to a circuit court, it goes on the record. So the record created here tonight and at your next deliberation meeting is the record that goes to the circuit court for review. The circuit court doesn't hear the case all over again. They rely on your record. And so one of the things that the case law that we've discussed in our training sessions has, has come to make clear is that courts who review ZBA variance decisions want to see a supported motion. In other words, they don't want to see, I move this. They want to see, I make a motion to do this for the following 10 reasons, all of which you heard during the course of the ZBA hearing process. So the law says, any agreed party, so that would be somebody who was for the variance, somebody against the variance, any person who doesn't like your decision either way, if the court finds standing for that party, they can go to the circuit court and challenge what you did. And when it goes to the circuit court, they only look at four things. They look at whether there's been compliance with the laws of the state. Is it based on proper procedure? In other words, did you get notice out? Did people have an opportunity to be heard? Was it properly advertised and all of those rules? You have a crackerjack clerk staff here who makes sure all those procedural matters are in good order. And here's the, here's the third one, but I think is the most important. Is, is the decision supported by competent material and substantial evidence on the record? So your decision has to be based on evidence in the record. So I urge you to have paper in front of you. I urge you to have pencils and pens in front of you. I urge you to take notes and listen and balance what you hear against the standards to grant or deny a variance. Sometimes the court can look at the record and say, I don't like the record at all. And so the law says that the court finds that the record is inadequate to make the review required by the court under this section. They can send it back and have you conduct additional hearings. It's very rare. I haven't had a situation where that has happened, but it is possible. So bear in mind, variance, no variance, yes, no, anyone agreed by your decision has a right to go to the circuit court. And when you go to the circuit court, we have to tender the record. If there was a case file in the circuit court, I have to get together with the clerk and all of the materials from the application through the end of the public hearing, through the deliberations, through the motion. I bundle it up in an index and it goes off to the judge. The judge orders a briefing schedule and the judge makes the call. So it's important that you prepare. Mr. DeWitt does a great job at maintaining the procedure of this process. It's really important that you take notes, be ready to make supportive motions when it's time to do so. And I know at training, I normally bring you a pizza. That, that is not happening this evening. So let's proceed, and I think we follow our process that we have followed. I know Mr. DeWitt is going to announce the variance that's at issue this evening. That was a subject to the public notice. He's going to open up a public hearing. We're going to listen to the public. He's going to take notes on what the public is saying. We're going to close that public hearing. We'll ask the public to, you know, let everybody speak once before raising your hand to speak twice. Mr. DeWitt takes good care on that. And when the public hearing is over, the applicant will stand up and give you a presentation on their version of why they are asking for this variance. At that time, you can ask the applicant your questions. And then I know, I know that we normally then adjourn for deliberation until our next meeting. At some point, and this has come up before, we will ask the applicant if the applicant is receptive to your phone calls to potentially visit the site so that you can see firsthand what we've been talking about this evening. Are we good to go, Mr. DeWitt?
I think so. Everybody understand? The board understands? Okay.
You know I get paid by the words, so I want to draw that out. So let's have a good hearing. Let's enjoy the public comments and come to good decisions.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Davis. Okay. So following on that, tonight is our public hearing on case number 25-2. Just a reminder, we're going to start with the public hearing and then we'll move to the applicant's discussion with the board. So the applicant is Trowbridge Land Holdings LLC. The owner is Nabil and Loretta Asmer. Sorry if I butchered that. Property address is, it's vacant property on Rochester Road in Section 22. The vacant parcel is immediately north and adjacent to 120 Lakeland Lane. And the nearest public crossroad north of the vacant parcel is Army Road. The parcel ID is 05.22.426.007. Zoning is residential 1 R dash, R point 1. Parcel size is 10.617 acres. Like I said, this is our public hearing, so we're going to have a, need a motion. Well, I'm going to read off the variance request prior to opening up the public hearing. The applicant is seeking a non-use dimensional variance from Article 4, Section 4.19B.15 to allow an accessway easement within the 60-foot setback for land division's application. The variance is, the applicant seeks up to a 40-foot variance into a 60-foot setback from the south property line for a distance of 270 feet of the 800-foot accessway easement that will place the requested accessway easement 20 feet from the south property line instead of 60 feet as required. Section 4.19B.15, "The intersection of a private road with a public road and the intersection of the private road segments with other private road segments, intersection to intersection shall be at right angles or as nearly as possible to right angles as conditions permit. Intersections with offsets of less than 125 feet should be avoided where possible. A private road intersection with a public road shall be at least 125 feet from any portion of another private road. Private road and accessway easement should be offset from adjacent property lines at least 60 feet to allow for parallel private roads and minimization of turning conflicts." And before we move to the public hearing part, I just want to ask the applicant if that's the correct request that you're making. Okay, thank you. Now we need a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'll make that motion. We open it up at 6:13.
Sounds good. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote on opening the public hearing?
Mark Smith.
Yes.
Jay Sandler.
Yes.
Everett DeWitt.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair, Robert DeWitt.
Yes. Okay. So this is our public hearing portion where we welcome the public to come forward and speak on the application. If you come up one at a time, announce your name, and I think that'd be appreciated. So it's up to you guys. There's a lot of, yes, so one at a time, please. And if you can keep it brief initially, that would be good, but you'll have a second chance if there's.
Joe Nato from 747 gravel ridge. I just have a procedural question. Are we able to come back up for another question after he does the presentation?
No, no.
We only get one time to ask a question and that's it?
You get to talk all you want right now and then.
And then he makes his case and then we don't come back up?
Yep.
My, my one part that I was going to be bringing up about the variance, we have multiple parcels on the lake that are also going to be developed probably one day. And to give this variance at this point and have that far of a setback, we were just opening it up for somebody else to be able to do the same thing down the road. That's my comment.
Okay. Next.
Jeff Von Shensky on 20 Lakeland Lane. Trowbridge Land Holdings applying for land division permit for parcel 0522426007, resulting in four parcels for future development. I have concerns with the scope of the development plan and believe it will have significant impact on the area from environmental, aesthetic, and precedent setting. I provided a letter to the zoning board. I trust you all have it. I hope you have an opportunity to read it at some point. It goes into a lot more detail than I plan on discussing here tonight. I'm going to try and keep my comments related to specific ordinance topics. The township's engineering review of the development, and this will be a little bit out of sequence without being able to have heard the presentation on the development first because I'll reference some things in the development and unfortunately it won't be disclosed or discussed until after I'm done talking. Township's engineering of the development resulted in three recommendations. The development proposes two docks, one at a 36-foot length and a second at an 85-foot length to extend into Lakeville Lake. The four parcels that are being developed have two proposed with frontage on Lakeville Lake and two proposed back toward Rochester Road. The proposed, so the township engineering review, the proposed docks shall be removed as they're not part of the land division process. So as a side note, if the docks end up showing up in the later development or they would be subject to complying with zoning ordinance Article 1303-1, limiting their length to 35 feet. The second recommendation out of township engineering department was the common access easements are not permitted due to the requirements of Article 13, Section 13.107, preparing rights, keyhole development, zoning ordinance. The development plan shows common access easements, two of them, one on each of the lakefront lots to provide access to the off, the back lots for lake access. The third recommendation out of the engineering review is that the property owners and/or applicant will need to revise the private accessway easement in order to provide a minimum 60-foot setback from adjacent property line, parcel 0522426008. The engineering review did not mention Article 13, Section 13.103-5, which states, "The natural protection strip shall not be filled, excavated, and shall remain native trees and shrubs." I don't, for some reason, that particular ordinance in terms of excavating, filling, and tree removal and the natural protection strip slips through cracks. And it's a, it's a specific ordinance with the terminology shell, which is construed to mean mandatory. The proposed accessway development will result in excavation, fill, and tree removal of 14,000 square feet, roughly a third of an acre, in designated wetlands and their related natural protection strips. Eagle has issued a draft permit for the road construction contingent on a number of requirements, including, but not limited to, the purchase of wetland credits, essentially paying the state for, to protect wetlands somewhere else and allow disruption of wetland here. Secondly, compliance with federal, state, and local statutes. Eagle is not aware of and does not consider local ordinances in their permitting. Local municipalities have the authority to set requirements that are stricter than the federal and state statutes and can override Eagle permitting. The parcel has extreme topography requiring significant excavation and filling to construct a road of a reasonable grade. The excavation and fill will alter stormwater runoff, redirecting it toward a contained wetland area to the north and to the neighboring property to the south. At one point, the proposed accessway will have an elevated road 25 feet above the natural grade. Between the excavation and fill, there'll be a 45-foot change to the natural grade of the property as it sits. There's one section of the property that is going to be taken down 20 feet and, and then right next to it, the next section will be filled 25 feet to create the grade on the road that we want. Even if, oh, the Eagle does caution that grade changes resulting in increased runoff to, to adjacent properties are subject to civil damage litigation. So in, in Eagle's draft permit, they recognize that there's potential for stormwater runoff to the neighboring property. Even if the scope of this proposed accessway is replaced by private driveways, the amount of excavation, fill, and tree removal needed to access the lake frontage will not change much. Essentially, there's a hill and a valley that they've got to get through. Whether they put a driveway or a road in there, it's going to take excavation and filling, significant excavation and fill. The township ordinance states that the natural grade should not be altered and future development should be consistent with the surrounding area. The whole northeast corner of Lakeville Lake from Mac Road to Army Road off, along Rochester Road is heavily wooded. The proposed development shows clear cutting of three acres of a 10.617 acre parcel. The wetlands area contained in this parcel totals 4.04 acres. Back to the specific zoning, whoops. Back to the specific zoning variance request, case 25-2. The applicant states that the variance will allow the accessway construction without causing any interference on the neighboring property, parcel 0522426008, to the southwest. My wife and I own the referenced property south of the subject parcel. Nobody's asked us if we thought there would be any interference, and we don't agree with the assessment. Reducing the ordinance sidewalk setback by 40 feet will result in a roadway 20 feet from our property line. It'll require 40 more feet of trees to be removed. It'll require, it'll provide 40 fewer feet of noise isolation from our property to that road. And it'll provide 40 fewer feet of blocking light pollution from vehicle headlights. We have the expectation, as defined by the township ordinance zoning, to not have a road closer than 60 feet from our property lines. And we're not interested in giving up that expectation for the sake of development. The subject parcel is six point, I'm sorry, 10.617 acres. It's hard to believe that on a lot that size, you would need to have a side lot setback. And in fact, it might indicate they're trying to squeeze more into that parcel than it will allow. There's no hardship involved here. There are alternatives to the proposed development plan that could remove most, if not all, the non-conformities. It would, I would encourage you to review the property in person to better understand the disruption involved. And you're welcome to park on my property at 120 Lakeland Lane for easier access to the parcel. We ask the township to uphold their zone ordinance and our rights as defined by ordinance and decide to deny the variance request.
All right, thank you. Next person?
Paul Haasner. I received my letter and I just kind of want to cover that a little bit. I live at 20210 Kingston, which is in LA, that across the Bay community where this development is. My concern is with the lake. I don't see any erosion control here, okay? I don't know where you turn to for that. I know that's not something you're looking at tonight. I understand that. But I'm very concerned that, and it's in my letter, all the land balancing, the homesites, all of that. There's a very large watershed that runs through that, okay? It drains the swamps on Rochester Road, the curves that go around north of that. Comes off Jess property, comes off the north Eisenhardt property, okay? And down the hill into, into basically a swamp, and then it runs into Lakeville Lake, okay? With all this earth moving and, and I don't see how it can be controlled the way this is configured, the way it's shown. Furthermore, they show, you know, okay, it's a minimum of two-foot culvert, 100 feet long or whatever it is, okay? If they're going to force that water through a culvert.
Excuse me.
Speed up the water, okay? And run on into Lakeville Lake, and it's going to fill my bay up with silt. It's going to be sediment-filled in no time. And it's already relatively shallow there, so it's more than navigable right now. But that's what I see coming with this development, okay? I don't know how to control it. And when that happens, who do I turn to? Or who does anybody turn to to correct the problem, okay, down the road? So I see that as a real problem. On that plan, they have a northern homesite that really skirts the 25-foot protection zone on both sides. The top of the hill is as wide as your desk, and they want to put a house on it, okay? And it goes just like this, okay? I don't see that even as a viable option for a homesite. But you'll, we have the opportunity to look at it and see, so that's kind of where I'm at with the whole thing. I don't agree with this, the way it's settled right now. I don't know how you control the water coming out. There's a lot of water when it rains hard. It's like a waterfall coming out of there, okay? You can hear it. So I don't know how you control the sediment, you know? Yeah, they don't get, we're going to put silt fences up. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. But it's too much. You're still not going to control it, okay? Not with this much, that's the reason why we're going out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person?
They did a great job. I don't, they did a great job. I concur. They have a lot more information than I do. I don't know why on earth we would allow four houses on a three-house lot. I don't see one single plus for the lake or the community when you've got things like keyhole and funneling possibly happening, when you've got extra septic fields, you've got huge runoff issues. You're infringing on neighbors who are already community members here. You've got more concentrated population in a rural setting. This is not a hardship case. This is, seems to me to be an issue where a developer wants something, and I don't think that we should respect what a developer wants over what's good for the lake and the community and the members here. It also sets a necessary precedence, which is a dangerous thing to do. There's no one on this lake who lives here already who wants us to be like Lake Orion. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So I say that we respect the residents and the community, and we do not vote yes on this variance.
Thank you. Next person? Anybody else want to make, address the board?
Good evening. My, my name is Frank Kenke. I'm also a homeowner on the lake. I live right across the street from the bay that the activities propose to take place on. I'm at 213 Kingston. I agree with what everybody said, and particularly the first gentleman that was up here. I mean, this is, this could establish a precedent on this lake. There's a lot of undeveloped land on the lake's shelf. Whatever happens here is, you know, is going to set things in motion for the future. So I think it's very important to, to take all that into account. I, I'm an attorney and work with a, a large law firm. We have a large environmental group in our firm, Environmental Land Use Group. And I had one of our attorneys come out and kind of check out the situation. He was pretty shocked at, you know, the situation and all the variables and groups that are going to have to be jumped over before, you know, before this can move forward. So it's, there's, there's a lot there. I would really encourage you to go out there and get that negated. There's a, it's, it's pretty interesting, so. There's a, it's pretty interesting, so I would just urge you not to take this lightly. You know, a lot of people here value the lake and the beauty, and this could really change things, so.
Thank you. Next person?
I'm Sandra Gervick, seven oh five Rebel Ridge. My, I looked at the plans, I heard about this, and I looked into it, and everybody's said, you know, spoke, and there's nothing else they can add to what they said. But what concerns me is the whole idea of this, I'm sure, is so that there'd be lake access and you could have lakefront property. And the only way to get that is to have a dock, and I see that there's a thirty-five-foot and an eighty-five-foot dock or whatever going over wetlands to get that. And I look at what we spent as a township fighting the people who had nonconforming docks in the last few years, and how everybody had to go to their thirty or thirty-five feet or whatever it was. We have a hundred and eighty feet or something of frontage. Anything over seventy-five feet, you have to pay extra taxes. We pay a lot of taxes to have a house on this lake, and we get nothing extra having all that frontage. We had to stay with the thirty-five feet. I know people went through extensive amounts of money to pull their docks out that were over thirty-five feet or if they had two docks, and now here we are. If you don't have lake access because you're not going to have a conforming dock, that's something that should be considered before the rest of this. Because you're looking for a lakefront property, but if you can't get into the lake, then that lakefront property becomes not really like front property, I mean, it's used lakefront, but if you don't have access to the lake. And all the people who spent a lot of money fighting and having to deal with, fight, you know, they got taken to court, and they had to hire attorneys and all of that, and all the money that our tax dollars went to because people didn't have under the thirty-five feet or whatever, and now if you allow an eighty-five-foot dock or whatever was stated, sixty-five or eighty-five, how many more people are going to start fighting to have a bigger dock? I would love, our house, we have a lot of property and a lot of frontage, but our house is far away from the lake. We wanted to put a big, like, deck thing into the water so we could be on the water when we were on our dock, and we can't have that. And, but if you allow this, then how many people are going to start coming and asking for variances for their docks? And we just, I mean, I can't even imagine the tax dollars that were spent and the people who had to hire attorneys, how much money they spent two years ago to fight for their docks. So that's something that seems like if you're not going to approve the dock access, why is this even a discussion? So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Next person?
Phil Martin. My wife and I live in five hundred here. Everything they said, a hundred percent. What I wanted to bring to the table was, we moved here three years ago from Rochester. Love Rochester because of the way they manage their city, the way that they adhere to the variance that make it a great city, the way that they made sure that the reason that people wanted to move there was because they held to what made it great. We moved here because it's great. And so if you whittle away the greatness, it's no longer great. The reason why they want to get here is because of the predecessors, the fights that Sandra talked about, everybody that says, let's keep it great. Let's make sure that this is a beautiful place that people want to live. And if we start eroding that, because, yeah, okay, that's fair enough, we can do that. That's fair enough, we can do that. Now, what we had before I got here, you know, I'm, we're privileged to live here because of all the work that was done before us. I get that, but, you know, if we start eroding that, it's gone, you know? People aren't going to want to live here anymore. The reason it's fantastic now is because of the ordinances that they don't want to use anymore, the ordinances that made it great. You can't cross a private road. You can't get really close to somebody's property. That's common sense. You know, if you're raising your kids and there's a road twenty feet away, probably not a good idea. Are you going to want to live there? I don't know if I'd buy that property. So again, to me, you know, you guys are all smart. You get it. That's the thing that we're at the front of. Do we want to keep it great, or do we want to see what happens? And I would suggest I go keep it great.
Thank you. Next person? Anybody else want to make a public comment? You beat you to it.
Go ahead. Go, go ahead. At my age, I need time to be working.
Hi, dear. I'm Paul Hurd, and I live off of Lakeland Lane near Jeff. And everything I heard tonight, I agree with everything. Variances, they just make trouble. But I'm saying that on a different aspect, too, is because when we pulled off Lakeland Lane to Rochester Road, there's a lot of traffic there, and there's a curve. I'm not exactly sure where the driveway is going to come, but there is a nasty curve there, and we have to be extremely careful in regards to any variance that come up to our road just because of the curve and the traffic there. And that's very concerning because it's dangerous, that corner is dangerous. And I want you to know that if you add any extras, you're adding more to the problem of dangerous traffic, and everybody knows traffic is an issue here just because of how many curves there are in that area. So I just want you to know, just think about it, more traffic and effort.
Thank you. Okay.
Wayne Hodges, eight twenty-five, Coe Drive. I am not only a resident here, I actually have to be president of the Lakeville Lake Proprietary Association. I've also sat where you're sitting tonight for the City of Brighton on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I understand what you're dealing with. So I'll keep my comments very brief. I don't see the hardship here. Number two, I would advise you to pay close attention to the requirements of Appendix A, Section thirteen, the Lake Lot District, that was specifically put in place to protect the lake. And I have concerns about violating that. Number three, the idea of wetlands traded. It may work on a macro basis, but on a local basis, if we lose wetlands on this lake and it gets created somewhere else in a trade, this lake still loses. And I don't think that's right. Number four, I do believe that if you grant this, you will be setting a precedent, a precedent that I oppose, a precedent that I believe you will regret. Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
Whoever follows, wait. It's a conclusion. You're well-trained, Bob.
Anybody else want to make a comment to the board? Anybody else?
We could.
Okay, one more time. Anybody else want to make a comment? We're, we're ready to listen to you. Okay. If there aren't any more public comments, we'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion that we close the public hearing at six thirty-nine.
Any discussion about the motion? Hearing none, if we have a roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Tony?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay, so, public hearing on the variance request is now closed, and now the applicant gets to make their presentation to the board. And just a reminder, the public here is not supposed to be commenting or asking questions of the applicant at this point, or making any other outbursts or anything of that nature. You need to listen to the applicant and be respectful of it. So just a reminder. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick McWilliams of Keef Engineering, working on behalf of Crowbridge on this very unique, difficult site. As is spoken, it is a very unique site. Wanted to kind of highlight a few things with it. I've been doing this kind of work for many years, and it is one of the more challenging ones because of the extreme elevational topographical differences, like where we want, are proposing to put our road, there is along that centerline variations of forty-five feet, the big gully etc. So most of you may know that, but that's quite extreme. Other things, of course, are the beautiful wetlands. We got the stream going to the south, and maybe on coming back to the north, into a very large, pristine, high-quality wetlands, which then eventually leads to the lake. So we're well aware of that, and we would not be here if there was an option to avoid getting within the sixty-foot variance of easement requirement. The reason we are there are because to do so, to construct a road and to provide access to four lots, which by the way, this is a ten point six roughly acre site, this is our one zoning, which allows one acre, of course, that's our particular wetland. But my point is, there is no, in no way, shape, or form are we cramming lots, and we're simply trying to get four lots in a ten-acre lot. So you're, you're talking an average of over two and a half acres each. This is not any type of cram job. If we could keep the road centered on the site that comes off Rochester Road, we are centered off Rochester Road right in the middle, and we are well aware of concerns that were brought up about what is referred to as site distance when you come out and you can see properly each direction, and that's often submitted to the road commission. That's a process that's underway, but we have proper site distance to be able to see based on speed limit, people coming from the south and the north. Anyway, we're centered coming off of Rochester Road, that's not the problem. The problem is, as you know, if we get further back to the west toward the lake, we have a huge, large, pristine wetland on the north side. We have worked diligently with Eagle, and I know that's not the only people we have to assess, but we've worked with Eagle in an effort to do the minimal amount of disruption, which is crossing each of those streams once. We've done that, and we have our underbring of having the wetland permit based on purchasing mitigation credits. But the reason we're forced to go further south and get too close to the homeowners on the south is because we're trying not to fill a large wetland on the north. So it's a balancing act. That's why we're, that's the hardship. If it wasn't there, it'd be easy. We'd be right down the middle, we wouldn't be here. But we are trying to preserve the wetlands to the north. Eagle would not allow us to disrupt more wetlands when there's an option, and the option is what we've shown on the plan. So there's the elevational issues I mentioned, and then there's the large wetland issue that I mentioned that we're trying to preserve. When you deal with the road commission, the road commission is, of course, it comes into play where we connect to Rochester Road, but the road commission standards are applicable for the design of the road, even though it's a private accessway. The standards of the township require that we design it slope-wise up and down to road commission standards, and that limits how much you can plummet down the gully, if you will, and back up. You have to do it with reasonable slopes that are safe, and that's what requires what, I know one of the gentlemen pointed out, the large fill we have across the valley, that's true. His numbers may not be exactly right, but it's close. There is quite a fill, and there's quite a cut to accomplish these safe slopes of the road, and then also to accomplish proper slopes off the edge of the road on each side. You don't want a dangerous situation. So all of that is what contributes to why we forced ourselves to come here and ask for a variance. Now, four lots on that acre, like I mentioned, is not an extreme request. We are looking for two lots on the lake, and we are two lots over the front, lake lots. Just to back up, we originally came in and spoke a year ago, nearly, December, with with the planner and at a pre-application meeting, and we discussed the option of having a shorter cul-de-sac that would only cross one of the streams. I'm not trying to confuse you here. And then asking for the idea of having a shared driveway for the two lots down with the lake. This was next. I said that that is not allowed in the ordinance. Shared driveways are not allowed, is what we were told. We would have to construct a road all the way back to provide access to the lake lots. And that then required, the fire chief was there, that we would also have to construct a cul-de-sac because they have to have a way to turn around. So these are not, this is not the way we wanted to go originally, but this is the way we were required to go just to get access to two lots on the lake, which is not unreasonable. And really, it's, it is not unreasonable for an owner to want to get access to the lake, as long as they do it according to the proper standards and, you know, Eagle requirements and permits, etc., all the necessary permits. So I don't think it's okay to just say someone can't get to the lake because there's a beautiful wetland crossing. We know that. We want to do the minimal amount of disruption, but that is not really a realistic thing to say someone can't have access just because there's some difficulties to overcome. So anyway, I don't know if there's anything I missed here, but that's where we got, how we got to where we are. Now, just to point out, the road itself, the accessway is, it has a sixty-foot easement. The road itself is only twenty-foot. As we come down and we get close to the neighbors to the south, we widen out into a cul-de-sac, which, that cul-de-sac, that's the tightest spot. The edge of the easement cul-de-sac is twenty feet away. Excuse me. That's what we called Thursday night earlier, we, uh, and, so the actual edge of the cul-de-sac itself is ten feet, so it's thirty foot away. Not sixty foot, but I'm just telling you it's thirty foot away. The rest of the main road, which is twenty foot wide and is sixty-foot easement, is forty foot away at the cul-de-sac. So what I'm getting at, if you take that, and I don't know if people want to share, but when you look at where the cul-de-sac is, just to understand, it's like seven feet below the property line elevation along the neighbor's property on the south, and we will have thirty to forty feet of distance from our edge of our road to that, which would allow plenty of room to put a tremendous landscape buffer. Not even telling you what, all the trees that are already under the neighbors to the south, I know we can't count on that, but we have plenty of room to put a tremendous buffer. We're not talking about a highway here, talking about two homesites only. So we're not, you know, not many cars are going to be driving down this road. So I guess, I think I've covered the main reasons we ended up where we are. We didn't want to end up there, but to shift it to the north would be to encroach into the wetlands, which would not be acceptable for the Eagle. If there's any questions, I'll be the best to answer them.
The board has questions? Let's start with Mark, if you have anything right now, or?
At the moment, I do not.
Mr. Brayfield?
I'm set right now. Thank you.
Tony?
It seems like you've locked in on four parcels, four homesites. Have you considered a lesser number on that property?
The homeowner, or the owner, I should say, the developer, you may want to speak on some of this, but he felt it was not unreasonable to want two lots on the lake. It's very wide, you've got four hundred, which is on the east and west, so it's not like you're squeezing the river. So he felt four is the minimum that we'd want to go over ten acres saved.
Jay?
So.
Jay, any question?
Not at the moment.
Oliver, do you have anything?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Going back around? Mark? Mark?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Stini asked the question that's been on my mind, so.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, it is zone one acre minimum, but that doesn't mean, you understand, that doesn't mean one acre.
I know. That's not realistic for this site. I agree.
I guess I do have a question. Have you considered any alternatives to this point?
Yes, I, well, I mentioned, the first alternative was, when we came in last, I think it was December, November, you had first talked, you know, was to have a shorter cul-de-sac with one shared driveway, which by the way, I'd like to point out that if you look around your township, and I know, because I've heard a lot about precedent, even the one homeowner to the south of us, the way they get to their site is by a common drive. I mean, I've got an aerial shows that there's probably six, seven lots get off the same drive, which is within 30 feet of their own property. I'm not saying it's okay. I'm just saying it's existing all over the place. So this is what's happening, but, so, and they're apparently being used as a shared driveway. We would have liked to have done that, had a shorter cul-de-sac with a shared driveway just with two lots down by the lake. It would still require significant disruption, as was mentioned, to cross that wetland road, but not as much because one driveway rather than a road, and standards are a little less. But we'd still have a significant building of the wetland right now. And that's, that's the one option we would have gone with, and that's the one we started.
And that was turned down while the building?
It was, well, it was discussed at length in the meeting, and the planner, Justin Schrank, he, I had the email, he said that he looked at the ordinance and that does not allow or provide for allowing shared driveways. So I, I mean, I know it's happened, the conditions existing around, I'm not saying it's okay, but he's saying for, from here on out, the future is not allowed.
So have you looked at the mitigation ratio that Eagle provided for the wetland disturbance?
Haven't looked at it. Well, I specifically, Brooks Williamson is our wetland consultant, and he's worked with them diligently. I don't think, to answer your question, that it's very feasible to mitigate on the site. Some sites run themselves easier to do that, but as you know, with extreme slopes, pretty hard to do. So I think that's why we'd rather mitigate on-site, but because of that, the nature of it, that's where they're forced to go off-site with the wetlands.
Your off-site would be two to one, three to one, four to one?
I, you know what, I know it varies with the type of wetland, and I, I don't have that exactly, but you're right, it's one of those, whatever the mitigation ratio is, that's what we're paying for if we end up going that way.
I've got one real quick. You are aware that, and it was brought up, that we have been in court, we just settled a lot of lawsuits with 35-foot docks. Why would we give you an 85-foot dock when we just got out of court withholding the 35-foot?
Yeah, that, you know, that's been, this is pending for months. That was on there. The docks are off our plan, but the plan we officially have still has it on there. When we resubmit, the docks will be removed, and if and when the docks come back, they'll be limited to what you allow, 35-foot.
But what I'm getting at is the docks, either one, are not part of this package, correct? The docks have nothing to do with the?
Yeah, they're not part of it.
Okay.
Land division.
Land divisions, doesn't have anything to do with?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're, like I said, when we resubmit, if we go forward through this plan, we won't have the docks on it. The docks will be handled separately if they're going to fight the docks, in accordance with your standard 35-foot.
Any other questions by the board?
Do you have any objection to them coming to look at the site?
People leave their number, I noticed they left his number. But he did, no, he didn't. He left his number. He left us on the pro. Hopefully, they don't.
Nothing from the board? Does the applicant have any more comments they want to add, or?
Anthony Randazzo, I'm here as the applicant, and I've heard everything everybody has to say, and I think there's a lot of elements. I would suggest taking another look at it from our perspective, like at that plan that you have. There's a possibility of pulling that cul-de-sac back to the east, which may require a variance, but I think it'd be a lot more disruptive, and certainly wouldn't bother, it would help out with the neighbor Jeff and everyone, and that would probably be the most intelligent thing to investigate. So I would suggest that we table that for now, and we investigate that, and in reference to?
Oh, hang on a second. Are you suggesting we table the variance requests?
Yes.
In lieu of alternative plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to point out the potential disruption to the lake and anything like that, we have to submit very comprehensive plans, and we have to follow them. And if you don't, there's huge problems. So we have no intent to do anything in terms of expected replays. Okay? That's just the way it is, and we're, you know, restricting a lot of it. So can I answer any other questions?
Chair, that you reached an act on the request to table the matter, that's your discretion.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we table this agenda item until further notice. Is that fair enough?
Further notice from the applicant?
From the applicant.
So in that, I'd like to, so?
Be specific.
Next month, we wouldn't be meeting on it or anything like that? We'd be tabling?
It's tabled.
Sounds like the applicant has an alternative plan based on the comments for, that could be reviewed by staff.
Right.
And they could come back for the, continue, you could continue this variance process if you're doing whatever you want, or there could be a plan that doesn't require this variance or some other variance.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to Florida table the variance with the support. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote on the motion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
That would conclude the public hearing part of this application. It's been tabled. So you're all free to leave or stay for public comments.
I would stay for his pizza. Make him go.
Okay. All right. You're welcome. Thanks for coming. But if you could please exit as quickly as possible so we can finish our meeting.
Okay, what's next? Public forum, right? We don't want another public forum.
No, 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 it's just public. That's where they can address the board on anything they want.
Reports, zoning board reports. Oh, this is zoning board. I don't even know what I did with my package.
Hey, if we could take our comments out to the hall?
Hit your, hit your gavel again.
If we could move out in the hall for our discussions? Well, I know, you can go. We'll dismiss you. Yeah, on your notice. Okay, if we could, if we could move out into the hall, please?
Politely, just to hit the door.
Thank you. We'll never get it done.
No.
Don't shoo them out. Okay, I, I think, can we all hear? Hey, guys, can we all hear? So?
Yep.
If, so, this is our public forum part of our meeting. If anybody wants to make?
No.
Any comments?
Hostilities?
Yes. Bye-bye.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, so it looks like this is our public forum. There's no public left to address us, so I guess we can?
No comments?
Nope, we can move past that one. Our other business is correspondence received by the board.
We did receive those two letters.
Received the two letters, and I think they've been admitted to the?
The record.
Record, okay. Next would be the zoning board reports. Any reports that we want to?
I'm good.
No, nothing? Then next is report of the planning commission liaison. I think that's Mr. Smith.
Do we have a liaison officially?
We do.
Earlier this week, we had our first planning meeting with the new planner, who's joined the township, and that was very encouraging. We are discussing reviews of ordinances for wetlands, renewable energy, and short-term rentals, among others, and we have no plans for review at this point in front of us.
Okay, good, good. Next would be a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
None? Okay. Meeting's concluded.